Good evening, members.
The budget was going to cover. So there wasn't a lot of clarity. Obviously, the town clerk has added reports to this, which I'm sure you've all read since. And that may have given clarity. So over to you.
I don't sit on the town promotion committee. I don't know.
That's Crittenham.
It would be worth me commenting at this stage. The last year, the Ramsgate in the air, which is now the Ramsgate Winter Festival, was obviously a pilot event and it had a lot of different funding sources. The way I see, I saw this when we knew that the application was coming in was that there are two quite discreet elements to the winter festival that can be separated out. One of which is the actual New Year's Eve parade and all the workshops that are required and other costs around road functions that are related to the parade, which form one complete element. And then the other element from which I, we have a budget set aside in the town promotion budget for New Year's Eve, which could be used to fund all of the parts of that element. So everything leading up to and including the New Year's Eve parade would be funded out of the New Year's Eve budget within town promotion. The other part of what is on offer, which are actually covered quite a lot in the document that was sent around a day or two ago from Jess, are all the other elements like that, as Theresa was talking about, that draw together the different things that were happening in the town. So that included the deer and the different things. There are too many, I can't remember them all. But all of the different things from which would be, the funding would need to come from the events fund. So it would be the grants rather than the town promotion set aside, which is Ramsgate Town Council's fund. Ramsgate Town Council had got, or town promotion committee under Ramsgate Town Council got that £10,000 for New Year's Eve. And that would cover the, everything to do with the lantern parade. It's a slight shortfall, but not a huge amount. And then the grant fund would be a separate discreet element, which would cover all of the other parts of what is being asked for. Together, the two discreet elements make up the complete winter festival. So I think for me, it's, it's about seeing it as two discreet events that are coming from two discreet budgets. And I think that's what has, because they merge together and there is also some budget savings. So things around marketing, whatever marketing is done for one, the other will benefit from. And so that there are some budget savings within that that would happen. But that's to me how I'm seeing it. It's just two discreet budgets, two discreet events. They can be separated or they can be seen together. And I think that was something that was found to be a bit confusing when we had the town promotion committee the other day. That's how it felt to me. I don't know if I can add more. If anyone else got any other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, I think some of the confusion is, say for instance, the mention of the lights in the air for the boats. Last time committed, when our separate funding has been requested for that and it's been mentioned tonight. You know, to me, there's confusion in the documentation as to what we're paying for and what, what the funding is going towards. Are we going to get other requests from other areas, the stuff like the lighting of the boats, which we do, we've done year on year. Happy to do it. Obviously, it's a great thing and it's a real draw. But I think it's just clarity. We've got to do, do a duty of care and we've got to know what we're signing off. Especially the questions rather than making, we're looking at 20,000 in total for two requests. So that's why we've got issues for council.
I'll come back, I'll come back to you, Crittenham.
With regard, members, with regard to the lighting of the boats, that application hasn't come in yet. It does come in annually. I'm expecting it in November. They tend to leave it until, until then anyway. So that will come out of the Ramsgate fund and it's normally for more lighting. It's not, and it's not a huge amount of money, but it is for that lighting in particular, which isn't related to this application.
Yeah. Has we mentioned the other thing?
Crittenham, do you want to come back on that?
Those, those events that you refer to are separate events that are separately funded. What has been said today is that the winter festival adds to the universal festival to draw, to join the dots basically. So you've got the lights up in there and you've got the street lights going on and you've got a Christmas tree up. But what the, the winter festival does is adds value to that by adding in additional events, making it last a lot longer and basically joining the dots. So that will happen, that will happen, that will happen, and then this fills in the gaps. And I think that is about the best way I can try and describe it. Does that help?
It helps. I think the paperwork that's come through makes that clear.
It still doesn't.
That does help the confusion.
Thank you.
I just think that there is a reference to those other events because it's necessary to reference the fact that what is being offered is joining the dots. So that's why those other events have been referenced.
Just that phrase, joining the dots, would have helped.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make a comment. I think we've all been lobbied on this, emails. You know, I'm not very happy about that, but that's fact of life. I think what, certainly from my, my point of view, I think we just need to control this in the best way possible. Because I don't want to get carried away, this council getting carried away with banging its money out for, for one event as good as it is, as good as it is, but I think we need to be careful. Okay, so I've got councillor Nicksey, then councillor Green, then councillor Shonk.
Right, thank you. So first of all, I'm, I'm all for something on New Year's Eve, if that makes perfect sense, a more community. And yes, you're right, you know, we get an element of council tax, not much, let's not, let's not go overboard on that one. But yes, we wanted the Ramsgate, that was the idea. The trouble I have with this is being on both town promotion and the grant scrutiny committee is the fact that, so back in the day, we used to do fireworks, weather permitting, and obviously we haven't for a couple of times, but it used to cost us £5,000. So let's just get that as a ballpark figure. And people along, you know, both cliffs could see that. So we were covering quite a large group of people. We as a council do support the boats, the tree lighting, the lighting in the town and so on and so forth. So there's an awful lot of like, we put into the town ourselves. There's also grant application form from Newington to do their own lighting event. So again, we put into that. So that isn't something as like a part of what's being on offer here. That's a separate thing that we are paying for. So there's a whole lot of things that are being sort of like used and I hate to say it, Crittenham, but it is muddy. The whole thing is muddy. So I'll give you an idea. The impact report for, for what happened in the past, it says additional town centre visitors was like 12,000, but there's no information as to where that comes from. So you're using information as like, oh, the advent doors trail, that's a separate issue. Harbour boat lights, that's a separate issue. Lighting up Ramsgate shop window trail in the high street, that's a separate issue. But again, it's on the impact report of what happened. Now, I'm not saying that you can't have an impact report for what happened in the whole Ramsgate. What I am saying is, we as the grant committee especially, we need everything to be really quite clear and precise as to who is doing what and what money is funded with what. And when we get other grant applications, it is very specific. You know, we want £575 for this thing and so on and so forth. So it's very clear. This is, we want to add to the effect of Ramsgate. Well, that's not really enough for us to be able to get money on. So let's look at what we've got here. We've got £10,000 allocated within the town promotion budget to do something on New Year's Eve. And that something is an event. So it's an event. Now, does that money come out of the events committee or does that come out of the town promotion because it's a New Year's Eve event? If we want it to both, well, hang on a minute, that's 20 grand, not forgetting the fact that we might have technicians time or Rebecca's time or something else as sort of add-ons for, you know, pay in terms of lieu or what have you. So we are looking at a substantial amount. And I go back to the £5,000 worth of fireworks, which is what we had before. So yes, let's have something on New Year's Eve, but let's keep it specific. Let's work out which budget it's coming from, because unfortunately it is not very clear as to what is coming out of the events fund and what is coming out of the town promotion fund. And let's make sure that this is good value for money for the residents of Ramsgate.
Thank you, councillor Nicksey. Councillor Green?
Yeah, I was at the, I'm not on the town promotion committee, but I was there for another item. And it's quite clear to me that, that the committee was all for allocating £10,000 for New Year. And frankly, I was, I was impressed by what was on the offer. And I was even more impressed by what happened last year. Now, we've given 20,000 pounds to events before. And I'm talking about the kite surfing. Because we saw the value in having an event that put Ramsgate on the map, which that certainly did because it attracted TV coverage. And this, I think, has the potential to do something similar. So I'm just, that the, that the grant subcommittee has not, has not commented on, on the request they had for, for the rest of the money, which makes it difficult for us. I think they should have. That, that would have helped a lot. But basically, I'm in favour of an iconic event on New Year for Ramsgate. I think the potential for the last year, for it to be built into something really spectacular to attract visitors and the town folk alike into the town centre. And I'm all supportive of it. I note that the grant subcommittee has allocated £3,000 for Newington lights. Now, Newington represents less than a tenth of the town, yet they're willing and able to, to, to grant £3,000 for that event. But I mean, seems disproportionate to me. But yeah, basically, I'm in favour of this event.
Thank you. I think it's a couple of things there, councillor Green, I just want to come, come back on. The kite surfing thing was over a number of days. It's not just a one evening event or one day event. I know that the work that goes on during that lead up to that event is, is, is a lot of work. And I think as far as the, let's not forget that Newington quite often gets left out at Ramsgate Town Council. Yes, it does. And I, you know, I'm not.
That's the best money. It's going to cost them 39 grand.
The urgent money is three and a half.
And I, I think the other thing is just quite rightly been pointed out, that the Newington event was three and a half thousand, we've got 3,000. And, but the whole event expenditure of that is nearly 40 grand. So it's, when you put it in that context, and unfortunately at the, at the moment, the ladies there and the event, this event hasn't, it doesn't appear to have any outside money coming into it yet. Hopefully, they, they will get other, other grant monies. So anyway, let's move on. I've got councillor Shonk, then councillor Nicksey.
Well, yes, it's very good to sit here with you members of the public here, but we did sit here on the other night, we talked about the, on that town promotion. And there's quite a few concerns about spending residents' money, because you're talking about a lot of money. My own personal point of view is it becomes the same old, same old. I mean, fireworks, people expect the fireworks. You know, everybody seemed to be tight-lipped. This is Ramsgate person, money to be spent. I mean, it's a great concern. I, I would like to see the fireworks, there's thousands of people turn up. When's the last time we had a proper firework display? It really is a concern, nothing else, the ladies, but it is public money. It's really, and we've got so many other things, but nobody's joining them up. It's a real concern. That's, that's my only point. That we all sat here the other night in quite a few tongues, we were against the spending that amount of public money on that event. Sorry, ladies, but that's my opinion. I hope I'm level-headed. I talk with common sense, that things need to be changed on it.
Thank you, thank you for that. I've got councillor Nicksey and then councillor Hudson.
So just to come back to councillor Green on a couple of things. First of all, you suggested that, you know, the people in the town promotion committee, of which there was councillor Orban, councillor Crittenham, myself, were all for, you know, spending the money. Well, yes and no. We all wanted an event. We all wanted clarity of what was happening. This grant, grant committee was also having a budget and therefore we agreed that we would postpone it. So we did it because there was lack of clarity. So let's not forget that. It's not the case of we didn't want something. We're quite keen on having something, but we want to know where our money is going and what it, you know, and how we need to spend our money. So you've clouded that a bit. Secondly, the grant scrutiny committee, of which you're welcome to come and sit in on, because councillor Shonk did, so you're welcome to come and sit in with us, looked at what we had proposed, looked at what was proposed in the town promotion committee, and again, couldn't see a clear distinction between it. So we decided for clarity for the council, so that everybody could have their say, we were to do the honourable thing and bring it to people so that everybody could have a look at it, because we didn't feel that we were in possession of enough information to make a decision to bring to council. So that's why we didn't put anything. And it's not the case of we don't think that you should get any events money. We didn't sit around and think, oh, they've got the town promotion money, they don't need the events money. That's not it. Maybe they will get some. The fact of the matter is that's for the council to decide, for us to have a look at the evidence. And yes, the reason that Newington got money, Newington out of the events fund. So if you were to go back to the events fund and find out how much Newington has got over the years, it is very little. They might have got money out of other areas, but generally, Newington gets almost nothing out of the events fund. And I back the £3,000 for their light festival wholeheartedly and wish them the best of luck with it.
Thank you. Before I go to councillor Hudson, just one thing. Councillor Green, just to, just to say, although you weren't a member of the town promotion meeting, at the meeting, you're a part of the, you did come up with the suggestion to give this event £7,000.
Yeah, I'm not.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
Nothing, because I was told that we could do the publicity for the other 2,000.
There you go. Just saying, just wanted to make that clear.
But there's nothing in front of me there that makes, makes things any clearer.
Oh, but then that's.
There was nothing in front of me.
No, but this is what we're saying, this is what we need to actually do, isn't it? Councillor Hudson, then councillor Crittenham.
Just to reflect back, it may have been money for Newington area, but I know loads of residents from adjoining wards such as my Northwood residents also attend. So this isn't about just Newington, it's about in town, at the back of town. It's about inclusion of all of our residents, because not everybody comes down to the centre of town, sadly.
Councillor Crittenham?
I wanted to respond to a couple of things. Now, councillor Shonk also spoke about the fireworks. Just wanted to clarify, the coming out of Covehead, the price of fireworks doubled. So it went up from £5,000 to £10,000 upfront by the fireworks. Unfortunately, one of the reasons that we've not had fireworks on sale in the years is because it's been cancelled on the day, on the night because of bad weather. Now, when that happens, part of what happens is if we have, we pay a certain amount upfront for the fireworks and it's non-refundable. So even though there's no event, we have paid out non-refundable money. So we actually, every time those fireworks events get cancelled, we lose. Now, we've had discussions in this council over the years with objections from people because fireworks are frightening for animals and things like that. And I'm massive, I actually love fireworks, I really do support them, but at the same time, I know that there is also a huge argument against fireworks. And so we did make the decision a couple of years ago that we wouldn't run the fireworks because it's just was such a waste of our council taxpayers' money to just be giving it away and then having the event cancelled. And it, and it was happening more or less every other year. It was just, so that, that's just my, my comment on the fireworks. If we don't spend the money on this event out of the New Year's Eve budget, then we would have to look at an alter, getting in another person to run an event for us. And Rebecca and I looked at that and we could only do that within that £10,000 if we utilised a lot more of things like our, like our technicians doing stewarding, things like that that may not be necessary with this one.
Not be part of the chat?
Wait a minute, I've finished you.
And so the other thing was, I wanted just to come back to the joining the dots, which is what was seen, said before. But also, there was something else that, oh yeah, it was £8,000 that councillor Green suggested.
No, it wasn't. Seven, eight.
I thought it was.
Inflation.
Sorry?
Inflation.
But £700 was what we were allocating within the 10, about £700 within the £10,000 budget. And I thought, hand on heart, I honestly believe he said eight. However, what I have done is I had a conversation with Laura afterwards and what we would, what it would cost us as a council to provide the marketing, which was what the reduction was suggested for, would exceed what it would actually be saving. Partly because of what I said earlier, some of the costs are shared between the two separate events. So within the budget that we were looking at, that town promotion, that would only be coming out of the New Year's Eve budget from the town promotion committee separately with the grants event, events grants fund, was only a portion, a proportion of it. So if the two events run together, then there is an economy of scale in marketing and we as a council would not be able to provide the level of marketing without bringing in extra costs. So that wouldn't necessarily be a saving for us. If we, if we did do a reduction in the money, it wouldn't necessarily be a saving. Those are the two points that I wanted to respond to.
Thank you. Councillor Shonk?
I'll take on, on board fireworks. We don't want to fizzle it and we would like it to go with the bank. We're talking about £5,000, that five.
No, we're talking about 10.
Well, five, but 10 still better than 20,000. It's, it would give someone different to look at. I mean, Paul says it's hacked to have fireworks. If you know you're going to have fireworks, keep your hands on them.
Unfortunately, councillor Shonk, Paul says that they're fireworks during summer. Ours was specifically.
Time has changed. It's a summer evening.
On New Year's Eve and it hasn't, and it hasn't worked. That's, that's why we stopped doing it. Sorry, sorry, can I just quieten please? Right. Anybody else wish to speak?
Can I just add? It's, when you say 20,000, bear in mind what I said earlier. It's 10,000 for the New Year's Eve event and it's 10,000 from a separate budget for the joining the dots event. I'm going to call it joining the dots event, seeing as that went down well with our mayor. That helped. So it's.
I, I mean, let's, 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 let's cut through all of that. At the end of the day, this event are asking for £20,000 from Ramsgate Town Council. That's the amount that they're asking. So it's up to you, members, whether you decide to give that £20,000 out of the New Year's Eve event fund, any other event fund, or not. And to give an amount is entirely up to you. So if anyone wants to make a motion, I think, I don't know if anyone wants to speak any, any further?
I'm going to start by proposing that we give the whole amount from the two separate funds for the two separate elements that will make up the complete winter festival. Let's start with that.
Which is 20,000?
So the application, members, is for £10,000. This is the application here. It will cover 30th of November to the 25th of January. This is, this is the event without New Year, New Year separate. So for this one, 10,000 from the events fund. And you're also proposing that the, the whole of the £10,000 of the New Year's Eve. Can I just clarify with you that there won't be any other expenditure on New Year's Eve? It will just, it will be up to 10,000 on that, okay?
10,000 is the budget set in.
That's, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
There is no more in that fund.
If you don't mind, councillor Crittenham, I know you could make your proposal, but I think we need to take this in two, in two, in the two lots. One is from the event fund and one is from the New Year's Eve £10,000 fund. So.
Second for the events fund.
So second for the events fund, events fund, councillor Hudson.
Thank you, and vote on that one.
Members, any, any more comment before?
Say which one you're taking first.
Members, you're, you're taking a proposal for £10,000 to be spent on the main event, not New Year, from the events fund.
Okay.
Members, any want to make any comment before then? No? So you've got that, you've got this motion and seconded. So all in favour, please show. Three, four, five, six. Those against, please show. Two, three, four.
Your vote, what's your vote?
But that's. So I would imagine, so that's carried.
Yes, members, that is carried, 10,000.
It wouldn't end up, it wouldn't end up. You understand?
That's right, that's my.
That's where I was waiting for it to be, to have me to have beside the boat. I wonder where it went.
Thank you, members. And now you have a proposal for £10,000, which is the whole of the budget for New Year's Eve, to go to the New Year's Eve proportion of the main event, proposed by councillor Crittenham, £10,000. Thank you.
Right, members, any comment on that now? Right, members, all in favour, please show. Five. Those against? Two, three, five. And I have a casting vote and I've counted that down. Did you, have you seen it?
Yeah, I understand too.
You were saying so. I have the casting votes, I'm, I'm voting against. So as I voted against and use my chair's vote to do that, I'm going to come forward with a motion of my own. And that would be to award £7,000 out of, out of the New Year's Eve fund. Members, any comments on that? All in favour, please show. Oh, did you want to speak, councillor Shonk, councillor Austin?
Can, can somebody, I'm not part of the town promotion committee. If we have a budget for New Year's Eve of £10,000 and we're proposing to give £7,000 towards the winter festival, what are we anticipating the remaining £3,000 will be spent on? Can I, can I get an answer from?
I'm just, I'm just going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. It matters not, and Dave is quite, quite right, and come back to town promotion and they can decide what they want to spend that money on, on New Year's Eve. It may be something completely and utterly different. They may wish to give it all to the, to the boats, it could be anything. Uh, sorry, so we're just, we're taking the boat.
Well, I just wanted to answer, the council about said to.
I just have.
Okay, right.
Just have.
I was going to answer as Chair of Town Promotion.
I just have. And all those in favour, please show. And that's carried, thank you.
Against.
Against. Thank you.
And members, we.
On what? Would the allocation's been made? The allocations have been made? Well, I was going to say, yeah, unless you wanted to make something under £3,000.
But that is what I want.
Okay.
I want this council to recommend to the town promotion committee that they spend that money, all of it, all part of it, on promoting the events at New Year. that they spend that money, all of it or part of it, on promoting the events at New Year.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second.
Can I just point out that promotion is part of what was proposed? And that group is looking for funding. And we do have things like the boats and extra lights and other areas of town, do you know what I mean, to be able to do things. I wouldn't, I would like it if we, if we do get other things through, if we just sort of held fire with that three grand myself. I would prefer if we didn't. That's my point.
I am a bit, I am a bit fluxed with this, um, that I'd already thought that it was going to go back to town promotion, because that's where it comes from, and that they should decide. Pardon?
A recommendation.
You're making a proposal, yeah.
A recommendation. Town Promotion.
You seconded, haven't you?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Yeah.
Um, I understood it's a recommendation. That recommendation can go from full council to the Town Promotion. Town Promotion will then decide what to do with that three thousand pounds. If it isn't spent on anything in particular, then it will go into the overall budget. It may be virated into another um budget. It may just then go back into the main town council.
Well, you're all right with buying it, Sonia, if you only have that last year.
Well, until Town Promotion discuss it. I don't know, but we can certainly consider a recommendation.
Yeah, and then I'd like that to come back to full council. Well, which it should, anyway. So, um, so we have a proposal and a second for a recommendation that it goes, the three thousand goes to you want to speak, councillor Shonk? Oh, we haven't got there yet, I haven't got there yet. That that goes to, back to town. Yes.
Um, most decisions are taken with Town Promotion. You seem to be taking on the decision to go away from that. It's for council estate.
No.
I don't think it's fair.
This was here because the lack of understanding of what was in the grant application and also from the Town Promotion. The idea for that came from the town clerk. We was going to go back to Town Promotion with it, but we thought it was quicker and easier to get it done here, because obviously, the the organisers of the events needed to know what was going to happen as soon as possible, which is what's been done. Um, so I don't see that as
I'm sorry, Chair, you are setting a precedent in asking for budgets that are spent by the Town Promotion Committee to come to Town Council, and that is potentially a precedent that
That may be so. That may be so. Um, I will talk to the town clerk about that. Okay?
Chair, you have every right to bring anything back to full council.
I know I do, but I'm just going to say I will talk to the town clerk. Right, we have a motion. You have it for the recommendation that it goes back to Town Promotion for them to look at to see what they spend it on. All those in favour, please show. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All those against? Stention. That's carried. Thank you. Right, goodie, goodie. Tough but good debate. Thank you. Um, right, moving on to item four of five. Uh, to consider a recommendation from the Town Promotion Committee that seven nine eight, seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine pound and eighteen p be wired from the beautification budget to decorate lighting budget. And the tax report from the town clerk provides further information. Members, any comments?
Can I make a comment?
Councillor Crittenden, please do.
It's only to say that one of the reasons for this is money was virated out of the decorative lighting budget to cover other expenses. And now, in effect, this is moving it from the beautification budget back into the decorative lighting budget. So it's unfortunate that we took it out of that one instead of that one, but that's, it's a fairly straightforward.
I totally and utterly agree. And if anyone's got any further comments, please make them. Otherwise, I'm proposing, proposing that we agree to the report. It's been noted and seconded. All in favour, please show. That's carried. Thank you. Right, item five of five. Uh, to consider report from the town clerk and consider the quote for roof repairs to Customs House. And I'm going to ask this, Morgan, if you want to say anything related to it, because you're mentioned in the report.
And the quotes that we got from her were from two totally different angles. One of them was very much of, um, building was not this way many, many years ago, but regulating the paint, and we had much more to come in, we'd done it this way, which was a massive job. And the other one was, I've seen the work from London, and the Drakeford Credit Service, the big best by the London. Um, and I'm currently in New Year's, so I asked him, and his was obviously a lot less. Because he was saying, you don't need to do half of that, there are requests, and it can be done. So there are massive differences in the casting.
Yeah, okay. Members, any comments? Need someone to propose a recommendation? For which one? Councillor Green?
Happy to propose a recommendation within the report, I'll be going to the second.
Second one, yeah. I'll second that. Members, any comments, further comments? All in favour, please show. That's carried. Thank you. Right, item six, um, committee minutes. Um, we, there are three lots of minutes here. Town Promotion Committee, fifth of August, twenty twenty-five. Planning Infrastructure Committee, sixth of August. And Extraordinary Town Promotion Committee, um, twenty twenty-five. Any comment from members on these? Uh, propose acceptance. Second please. That's all in favour, please show. That's carried. Thank you. Um, item seven is a letter of support to consider a request for a letter of support from Mind in Bexley and East Kent for a proposed community centre at Broad Street Hall. Uh, members have wrote out to you, you've seen the letter. Um, any comments from members, any discussion you wish to have? I think if we can have something like that in Ramsgate that would help Yes. mental health, it's got to be a good thing. Um, so personally, they've asked if a member, I mean, I'm quite happy to work with the town clerk. I'm quite happy with the word in that the town clerk's put into the report for that to go back to them. So I propose acceptance of that, and I'm the second please. Councillor Austin, all in favour, please show. Thank you very much. That's carried. And members, the date of the next meeting is Wednesday, the twenty-fourth of September at seven PM. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. End of meeting, and thank you, people watching. Thank you very much.